1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on Thursday, February 4th, 2021. Pursuant to that same section of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held Thursday, April 1st, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room, second floor, at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street, here in Omaha, Nebraska. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office of the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education Meeting Room on the north wall. With that, Cecia, could you call the roll, please?
Lauren?
Here.
Havlovic?
Here.
Mr. Hirschenbach said he'll be late. Johnson?
Here.
M. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Plechek is excused. And R. Ray?
There.
Five present.
Okay. With that, we'll move down to Agenda Item 2, Action on the February 4th Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes?
I submitted a couple of editorial corrections, and they are in the copy that you're putting in front of you.
Thank you, Roger.
Motion.
Yes.
I take a motion to adopt the February 4th, 2021 Meeting Minutes with the corrections offered by Roger Ray.
I move to approve the February 4th Meeting Minutes as corrected.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Cecia.
Havlovic?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
M. Ray?
Aye.
Bourne?
Aye.
And R. Ray?
Aye.
Five, five, five ayes.
All right, they are adopted. Move down to Discussion on Financial Statements from January 2021. Cecia?
For the period ending January 31, 2021, the fund had a value of $1,389,000,000 with cash on hand of $13,495,000. In reviewing and truing up or reconciling our drawdowns, I am, I have taken note that it appears I was being requested to draw down a little bit more than was needed, so I will, I'm beginning to trim back on the drawdown request to match closer to our monthly expenses. That ends the report.
Any, excuse me, any questions for Cecia? All right, thank you. Jack, we're going to move next to a discussion on the legislative report. Our, the OSERS lobbyist, Jack Peetz, from Peetz and Company, is on video with that. Jack, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Pat. I'm having trouble hearing you, so you might, if you have questions, just pull your mic closer to your face. Essentially, I think you're all aware, can you hear me?
Can I get it turned?
We're going to have her turn it up. Hang on one second, Jack. Try now.
Okay. Essentially, the four bills, or the five bills that pertain directly to OSERS this year in the legislature are 144, 145, 146, 147, and 582. All of those bills had a hearing a week or so ago in the Retirement Committee. 144 is a placeholder bill. It probably won't do anything other than lay around this year and maybe be used as a vessel if it's needed next year. Normally, when the bills are heard in committee, the committee will have everybody leave the room, and they neither that day or at a subsequent time fairly close to the hearing, they will do what they call exec on the bills, and that's decide whether they want to indefinitely postpone the bills, or whether they want to send them to the floor to be placed on general file. So far, none of these bills have moved to the floor to be placed on general file. All of the bills currently are still sitting in the committee, and the committee has not had an executive session on any of these bills yet. And one of the rule, one of the reasons for that is that Rule 3, Section 17 of the Committee Rules requires, once there's an exec meeting where they discuss the bills, they either make, they make a decision to either indefinitely postpone or send them to the floor. But the rule requires the bills to be sent, if they're sending them to the floor, they have to be sent to the floor within eight days after the exec committee. Currently, if you, if you check the status of the bills, LB 147 has received a priority status from the Retirement Committee, which means it's one of the bills that they're going to push to the front of the line. What's going on right now, and the reason that they have not moved out of committee is that LB 145, 46, 47, and 582 are in the process of all being combined into one bill, and that bill will be 147, which is prioritized by the Retirement Committee. And essentially, they call that a Christmas tree bill because whatever was in 145, 146, and 582, get hung on 147. So what we saw at the time of the hearing, in the way of the original bills as filed, and then the amendments that completely replaced a couple of those bills, that will all go by the wayside, and we'll end up with a totally new amendment to 147 that will contain all of the provisions of 145 through 582 that affect OSERS. And so that probably, because of the complexity of the language, it's touching so many different areas in the Retirement Statutes that it's taken the Bill Drafting Office quite a, quite a bit of time in order to get that straightened out, and so it comes out correctly without any mistakes in it. And even when it comes out, there'll have to be amendments because there'll be things that they'll miss. So I suspect that we won't see that for a week to 10 days. It depends on how fast that the Bill Drafters Office can get everything done, and then it has to go back to the committee, who then can have an exec session on it. So right now, it's basically in limbo, waiting for the Bill Drafters Office to finish up. I do have a, a request in with Lauren Kittenner, who's the Governor's Policy Research Office Director, and she has one of her staff members that specializes on Retirement Committee issues. And I visited with her, gave her some background on it, and we're going to try and get together first part of the next week, or when her schedule permits, just to see where the Policy Research Office is coming from, and what recommendations they may be giving, or guidance they may be giving the Governor's Office. I don't expect the Governor will commit as to where he stands on these bills, especially since he hasn't seen them yet, once they come out as in the Christmas tree bill, but we'll see, we'll get a feel for where the Policy Research folks are coming from, hopefully by the middle of next week. Any, any questions?
Are there any questions for Jack?
I do have a question for you, Jack. I know I attended the hearing, and a lot of the dates are being shifted around with amendments to LB 145 and some of the other bills, so that things don't happen quite the way they have been outlined originally. The compliance audit is going to be a complex process, requiring RFPs, we're considering today, and it seems to me that the bill actually-
I can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Jack, can you hear me now? Is there a way to increase the sound so that Jack can hear what I'm saying? Hello? Let me speak a little bit at a time, and Jack, kind of give a heads up when you can hear me. Two, three, four. I'm getting the impression that that's not working too well. I say it. He can't, he says he can't hear me.
You're not able to hear us?
I can hear you, but I can't hear-
Can you hear me now, Jack? That might have to be the, I do-
You're close to the screen, too.
Sorry?
I-
No. Will you try again?
Two, three, four. Can you hear me, Jack? Can you hear me, Jack? Looks like the answer is no.
I can.
What is your, what is your question? I'll ask-
Shall I just go up? Can we just go up and ask you a question?
We should be able to hear.
I can hear something really distant, but-
But not him?
Not like, no, not like you. Hate to have him come up to the table.
No, that's okay. Do you want to try one more time? Okay.
Jack, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Hopefully, everyone else can hear me as well. I said I've, I attended the hearing for these bills, and the, there were a number of amendments added to the bills that changed the timelines. They set up a amendment so that the compliance audit would be done first, and all the rest of stuff would be delayed a year, and the implementation's all been delayed a year. And my question about the compliance audit is this. The compliance audit is a relatively complex process, going to take some time. We're doing it, considering an RFP to do the compliance audit at today's meeting. I think it'd be better to try to do that compliance audit on a timeline that fits our schedule and the schedules of the compliance auditor, rather than artificial timelines that are set forth in statute. I was suggesting that perhaps we ought to be asking either that LB 145 be holding the committee for a period of time until we can see what those timelines are, or that it be modified to say that the timeline will be the timeline for the OSERS staff and the external auditor, rather than the artificial timeline they set forth in the statute. I was wondering if you had any comments on that approach?
Yeah, we've talked about that, and we've tried to push that back, and I think until we see what the consolidated bill comes out with as far as the time is concerned, I think that in talking to the committee legal counsel, that they're going to try and keep that, I think it's the November 15th date for having the compliance audit completed, but that may move depending on how fast the, the RFP is issued and the engagement is handed off to the auditing firm or firms, whoever ends up with that compliance audit. But in talking with Senator Coulterman, he's of the opinion that even if the compliance audit is delayed a little bit, or they find issues, they would try and work those through, and they would use that LB 144 next year to do any cleanup legislation they needed. But that's one of the reasons they pushed this whole process from 2023 out to 2024. They wanted to get the audit out of the way first, so they built an extra year into that process.
Okay. It just seems that it might be better for us to have that compliance audit done on our schedule, not on the schedule that they specified in statute, but I'm glad, thank you for the information.
Are there any further questions for Jack? Seeing none? Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you know as soon as I get it with the Policy Research Office.
Okay. Maybe if you could just stay on for a few more minutes until we finish this section of the agenda. Thank you. So, so, you know, our last OSERS Board meeting was on February 4th, and the, the position of the constituents was somewhat fluid post our board meeting, and so Jack had submitted some positions on behalf of the OSERS Board, and I'd like to make a motion to ratify those positions that were filed at the February 23rd, 21 legislative hearings. So the motion would be, if it's the pleasure of the Board, I would like to ratify the position filed at the February 23rd, 2021 legislative hearings regarding the following bills. LB 145, which is the audit bill, the letter that was submitted in support. LB 146, regarding the separation of work or return to work, also a position of support on that. And LB 582, which is regarding the board governance change, a neutral position. And so we'd take, OSERS would take no other position on any of the other bills. So that's kind of, again, the motion because the situation was fairly fluid in terms of the constituent groups lining up after the February 4th board meeting. So that's the motion on the table. I'd look for a second, and then we could have some discussion.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second, and if you would like me to read the motion again, again, it's just to ratify the positions that were filed at the, at the Retirement Committee, recent Retirement Committee meeting. Any discussion or questions or comments relative to the motion? Okay, seeing none. Cecia, would you call the roll, please?
Havlovic?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
M. Ray?
No.
R. Ray?
Aye.
And Bourne?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay. The motion's approved? All right, thank you, Jack. If you want to drop off, that'd be great. If you want to stay on, that'd be great, too. Thanks for your work.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the trustees, Scott Hirschenbach, is, is attending a different board meeting and will be here late, and he wanted to be part of that, the discussion on the compliance audit, so I'm going to go just a little bit out of order, and we're going to take up Agenda Item Number 6, which is Discussion on the OSERS Board Policies and Procedures Manual and Updating Those Manuals. It came to our attention recently that, in discussions with Senator Coulterman's office, that our, our manuals could stand to be updated, and if you recall, at the last board, the last OSERS Board meeting, we asked Cecia Carter to engage our law firm and to do a review on those board policy and procedures manuals and begin the updating of those. So we've got our, one of our attorneys, Peter Langdon, here to discuss the status of that project. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Pat. We have obtained a copy of the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement Board Policies, and we're going to use those, or are using those, as the model for developing the manual for OSERS. We've been through the policies, and there are certain policies that just don't apply. For example, a continuity policy for board members. They have a different method of selecting their board members rather than the election process. You have assessing employer fund withdrawal obligations. OSERS doesn't have that. You don't have multiple participating employers in the, in the fund. We added existing policies to the document, which have already been approved by the Board of Trustees, which include election policy, procedures, and guidelines, the disability review policy, travel reimbursement, the funding policy, including actuarial information, public participation at board meetings, and we will also be adding the qualified domestic relations order policy that deals with the separation of pensions upon a member's divorce. We retained certain policies that the State Board had in their manual that have not yet been adopted, and so these, these may be new, and those would include a board code of conduct, a policy regarding legal counsel and the auditor, and a policy regarding benefit calculations. So that's where we're at now. We have put together a draft, and together with the Executive Director, they're under review, and we will need, of course, the very important input from OSERS on how actually things do flow and how things are handled at the office. So that's what we're working on now. So it's progressing, we're pretty happy at the, at the rate of progress, so.
Are there any questions for Peter? So can you give us a sense of the timeline, just for, you know, curiosity's sake, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just, I don't know what level-
I'm, I'm going to refer to Cecia.
All right, thank you.
As, as Mr. Lagged Langdon stated, so we have first draft. I will look through that between tomorrow and the early part of next week, and hopefully we can tie this up, I have a note to myself, by the 19th of March, so that I can give the Board a preview, so you can kind of look at it, absorb it, before we come back to the April meeting. So give you some time, because it's not a 20-page document. It's a lot, it's a bit larger.
So I think the takeaway here is that the work is being done, and, and prior to its adoption, we'll have multiple chances to take a look at the document by the Board to make sure that it's, it meets our needs and is just part of good plan governance to update it. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. We're going to continue on with the agenda, as I mentioned. Scott Hirschenbach will be here, but he's a little late due to another board meeting. So we're going to jump down to Agenda Item Number 7, Action on Fiscal Year 2022 Budget for OSERS. Remind you that this is our second reading. Cecia?
Okay, so the, there were no comments made to me after last month's meeting, therefore the numbers have not changed, and I just asked that the Board adopt the, or approve, excuse me, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022, as I prepared. The motion that I, I would ask is that you're adopting the, the proposed budget for everything pertaining to purchased services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, and other expenditures, because at this point, we don't know what salaries and employee benefit costs will be, and we won't know that until later in the year. But at least the purchase services and everything else, administrative costs can be adopted, and then I can flow through with OPS's schedule of turning the budget in for OPS's budget processing.
Okay. Are there any questions for Cecia regarding the 2022 budget for OSERS? Seeing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I move the Board of Trustees adopt the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget for purchases, services, supplies, and materials, capital outlay, and other expenditures. Salaries and employee benefits are subject to future negotiations.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Cecia, would you call the roll, please?
Havlovic?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
M. Ray?
No.
R. Ray?
Aye.
And Bourne?
Aye.
Four ayes.
All right, it is approved. With that, we'll move down to Agenda Item Number 8, Action on 2021 Trustee Election Nomination.
Okay. The nomination period was opened in February. It closed in, a week later in February, the first week of February. There were no nominations that were brought forth for that certificated seat to serve from 2021 to 2025. Our board policy does state that if there are no, if there's one nomination or no nominations, the person stays in the seat, they're deemed to stay in the seat. I will remind the Board that Section 7980 of the Nebraska statutes indicates that the current occupant remains in the seat until such time as the next election, or should the current occupant resign the seat, a replacement of like kind is appointed by the Board of Trustees. So with that, it looks like Mr. Havlovic is still there.
At least for a period of time. Since there were no nominations made, we don't have really an election process to approve. We have plenty of time to make a decision on what's going forward. Mr. Havlovic, Havlovic would have a chance to indicate his desire to continue to serve in that capacity at that point as well, so we've got plenty of time to make the decisions.
Thank you for, I guess, supporting me. I, I will say I am running for a national position on a different board. I don't know if I'll be elected to that or not, so I, that will become a balance issue if I am, so, and I won't know that for a couple months, but just trying to keep things in line as well. Also trying to balance the kids starting high school this year and all the other pieces of life that are flying at me, so I was thinking somebody else might want to turn, but I guess I'm still it, so I will stick around as long as I am able to. We'll go with that for now.
All right, thank you. So we'll next move down to the Executive Director's Report. Cecia?
I, I wanted of the Board an update on our discussion we had last month about discontinuing sending out monthly pension payroll statements to members who are retired before 2015. So last month, I mentioned that we were, thought we would implement this sometime in April or May, but given some recent meetings, I suspect that this is going to be pushed further into the year, so it's going to take us a little bit longer to get everything finalized. My primary concern with the first meeting was that should that switch be turned off to print the statements, I wanted to make sure that there was no adverse consequences to the year-end 1099R, and so there had to be some testing to make sure, and, and that was confirmed. I've had two meetings with OPS Finance, because they are the department that generates these monthly statements and mails them. So the possibilities we've talked about is a mechanism to get all statements online. There are some questions concerning the use of non-OPS emails in order to access, being able to come in and access OPS anywhere, right? So we're looking at alternatives. There are roughly 3,400 retirees that this affects, so there is a question, would an active directory have to be built for all 3,400? So I'm getting a cost analysis on that. Another alternative is, OSERS is given a PDF each month of all statements, and therefore if someone really needs a copy, then we could just print it and mail it, but that's not necessarily the optimum answer. And then finally, the other alternative is that each January, since that is the month that the COLA is reflected- is the month that the COLA is reflected, that each January, everyone gets a printed statement, and then they also, later that month, get their 1099R. And then this way, and if there's any, what did you call it, tax withholding table changes, all this generally happens in January. So then people would see that, this is what my new monthly amount is going to be. So we are still working on it. I have a meeting scheduled, I think it's next week. We're going to follow back up, and so we'll have more information for you in April. But we are progressing forward with it, and like I said, I, it's a cost-saving, oh, we did, we did do a back-of-the-envelope cost savings, and over a three-year period, that is over 100, about $125,000 savings to the plan. So more information in April.
All right, questions for Cecilia?
I do have a question. In addition to the general COLA, which occurs in January, there's a medical COLA that occurs in October. Is there intent, then, to send those people who are getting the medical COLA, they stay in October when they get that for the first time, or when it increases each year?
That would be different, and for those, we were thinking of more of a postcard for the new ones, right? So the new people, then all of a sudden, they see there's extra money. And once they've received that, they know what that is.
They might know what it is, but they won't know what the withholding might be on that amount, and each year it'll go up by $10, but it'd be a different amount because of withholding and because of the payment type that they got. I think it'd be a good idea to find a way to notify the people, just the people who have the medical COLA, change what that change would be in advance of the change, so they can count on that, especially since they won't get a statement from the retirement system on that amount.
All right, thank you, Roger. Other questions? You know, again, the intent wasn't to be disruptive to the retirees, it was just to, you know, we had asked Cecilia to kind of find some efficiencies, to save, save some money without being disruptive, and this was one of the things we identified. So, you know, certainly don't want to leave anybody wondering what their check is and that, so I'm sure we can work our way through that. But any other questions for?
Well, I'm not done. I said I wasn't done. Yeah, that's okay. Fourth, I know. Fourth quarter investment performance report will be given at the March 11, 2021 Nebraska Investment Council meeting. Therefore, I will have the numbers and a report at our April 1, 2020 meeting of the Board of Trustees. Fourth quarter, fourth quarter is important to OSERS in that it sets the asset value for our annual valuation report, which is always dated January 1. And fortunately, fourth quarter 2020 was a good, was a good quarter. So hopefully, there'll be good numbers. Just so, again, listening public and board members know, so today I was informed that there were 42 refund distributions to non-Nebraska residents for tax year 2020 that received an incorrect 1099R. So these 42 are going to receive corrected 1099Rs probably next week. I will mail them out. It is being handled by the finance department. We have a cover letter notice that's going with it. So staff has been advised, should there be any questions, staff knows how to address them. Staff is also in the process of conducting our semi-annual review of outstanding, outstanding warrants on cash checks, okay? So these are pension check, refund checks, or account payable checks that have gone uncashed. Our check system, our checks that are issued, they are good for 180 days, or basically six months, and then they become stale-dated. Last review, when we did this back in August of 2020, we identified 132,000 of uncashed account payable checks that were reversed back to the OSERS trust fund. One was from an investment firm that had gone out of business just as the portfolio was transitioning to the Nebraska Investment Council, and two checks were actually lost and then paid over in the next tax year. So we do try to keep up on that, and, you know, unfortunately, when someone is getting a $7 refund check, you know, they don't take care of it. The larger checks, I do wonder how you not cash, you know, thousands of dollars of refund checks, but.
Cecilia, how many physical checks do we send out in a month? Do you, do you know that number?
As far as pension is concerned, monthly pension payments, that number is generally less than 15. And I say generally less than 15, because I think there's like seven that actually get a pension check, and then we might have a death distribution that goes out as a check, okay? As far as accounts payable, three, okay? And then as far as refunds, that depends, and that's on your report, like 26. At the end of the school year, it goes up higher, but that generally sits between 25 and 35 a month.
And so those retiree checks that are still going out, as we talk about not sending out a monthly statement, they'll continue to get a physical check, or are we going to ask them to transition to?
Correct. They are, for one reason or another, on a physical check, and that's generally when they are residing in a nursing facility, they need physical checks, they can't do the wires. Now that ends the executive director's report.
All right, thank you. I do have a quick question. So Cecilia, when we have a check that doesn't get cashed, does that go back into the OSERS fund, or does that go to the state and unclaimed property, or how does that work?
That should go back into, I direct them to put that back into the fund, because that is trust assets, not wages, or, I'm trying to think of something else, or.
No, that answers it. Thank you. Any other questions for Cecilia?
I'm just curious, what efforts are taken to encourage people to cash their checks when they receive them and they're out there? Is there any follow-up, or do you, are there any mechanisms to try to get them to cash?
Well, when the checks go out, they are sent out with a letter, so, which explains what this is. The last time, we did find a couple of people and explain to them, track them down if they haven't moved, and so then they were able to, you know, either bring the check back and we could reissue, or send the check back. We had a couple send the check back and then reissue.
Okay, thanks. I just, I bring that up because it's a hot button in the private pension area, uncashed checks and missing participants, and the Department of Labor, who does not have jurisdiction over OSERS, it's one of their key audit trusts right now, so it's probably something to take a look at.
Interesting. Thank you. Other questions for Cecilia? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I tried to shut you off earlier. I didn't real. Okay, so we're going to move down to agenda item number 10, the trustees' report, and then we're going to go back up to agenda item number five, so trustees' report. If there are any trustees that have an update?
I have one item I'd like to bring up. I just received an email today from the National Council on Teacher Retirement that had a link to a report from the California School Employer Retirement System, CalSTRS. CalSTRS is the largest teacher employment, teacher retirement system in the nation, and the second-largest retirement system itself in the nation. And every so often, in this case, this year, they release a sustainability report. I flipped through the sustainability report, it's about 50 pages long, and I found an interesting piece of information. CalSTRS has changed their assumed rate of return several times over the last few years, going down from 8% to lower figures. That increases the unfunded liability of the plan significantly when you do that, but they're on a path to be fully funded in awfully short order when you consider the timeframe of 30 years. And the reason they're able to do that is that they've increased the contributions from the state of California and from the employer. If you look at the report, the employee puts in X percent, the employer puts in X plus 3%, not 101%, but 3% more than the employee does, and it's not 103%. If the employee put in, say, 8, the employee, the employer put in 11, and the state of California roughly matches the employee contribution. So you're getting a three-fold stool to fund that plan, employee, employer, and state, with roughly equal amounts from all three. I found an interesting approach to maintain sustainability, and one we might want to consider, especially as we go forward and look at possibly changing our assumed rate of return, that's going to increase the unfunded liability by a bunch, and I think the way to handle that is to approach how we're going to try to get the thing fully funded by having more money coming in. I think the, there's a link in there that has that report to it. And Cecilia, did you get that same report?
I did. I, as you said, it came in this afternoon. I can certainly forward it out, download the report and forward it out to the board tomorrow.
That'd be good. Thank you very much.
Any other updates? All right, so I did ask Cecilia, you see there where it says public pension plan, investment return assumptions, as it relates to Roger's comment on the discount rate, I kind of, I wanted to ask Cecilia to kind of, again, because there's some new board members, kind of walk through the timeline of what's coming next as we receive information, you know, on the rate of return and the discount rate, so.
Okay, so this report came out after our last meeting, and so given the actuary had given us a discussion on valuation report and the experience study and what the various assumptions are, I thought it was a good follow-up from, from the actuary's presentation. Just so you know, OSERS is required to have an annual valuation report and a four-year experience study. So every four years, we do a full experience study. OSERS investment assumption was at 8% back in 2016 when I started, and was reduced down to 7.5%. I believe it was effective for the January 1, 2018 valuation. The investment return is a combination of the expected real return and the inflation over a long run, over the long run, and the economic consequences of lowering the investment return in the near futures does result, as Mr. Ray talked about, an increase to the unfunded liability for the plan, and generally results in a increase in the required contributions on the plan. So how, how the increased contribution is satisfied is plan-specific, but for OSERS, under our current statutes, the increase falls on the plan sponsor, OP, generally OPS. The report showed from Appendix A that, for the most part, our major state plans, as well as some of the local plans, or smaller plans such as OSERS, have already lowered their assumption returns to the low 7, like 7, 7 and 1/4, to actually the high 6. So there are plans out there with 6.85 assumption returns. So this is food for thought. I thought it was good reading to help explain, and we will have the experience study presented later on this year.
All right, questions for Cecilia relative to the timeline? Okay, all right. Any other trustees have any? All right, seeing none, we're going to jump back up to agenda item number five. It came to our attention here, oh, sometime several weeks ago, maybe a month ago, at least prior to our previous board meeting, that while we've done regular financial audits, we have not done a compliance audit. We've had some discussions with Senator Coulterman in the legislature. There is a bill that's pending that would require an audit. You know, my intent was to bring the issue in front of the board regardless of what the legislation is, but we, if you recall at our last OSERS board meeting, we asked Cecilia to prepare an RFP, which she did. We did share that with Senator Coulterman and his legal counsel. He had some suggested changes. We worked with our legal counsel. We made, we made some of those changes suggested by the chair of the retirement committee, and before you, Cecilia, has prepared, and our attorneys have looked at the RFP. I'm not going to read through it, but it's, I would look for a motion to issue an RFP to do a compliance audit as just part of good plan management, so. You want me to read the motion?
Sure.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the draft request for proposal for compliance audit services and directed to be issued March 8, 2021, with a due date of 4:00 p.m. April 9, 2021.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to issue an RFP. Again, remind you, this is not to, you know, injure into a contract, it's just to seek, you know, RFP responses from prospective firms, so. Any discussion relative to the issuing of the RFP for a compliance audit?
What's the process for our, like, I don't understand, I don't even know what the process, the timeline, and I don't know how this all works. Just curious.
The timeline is in the RFP, so we'll issue it on the 8th. I have identified the four firms that N. Pers used.
Okay.
I also identified three others, local, national firms with a local, strong local presence, that I know have strong retirement benefit departments. So they will, so of those four, of those seven, they will get a direct, you know, please consider this. It will go on our website, and also there's another website that I'm looking into about government bids.
Okay.
So it'll be out there for people who are, who have, you know, young associates that are doing that search, looking for contracts.
So you'll get RFPs by April 9, and then what happens?
So by April 9, and by, we'll have a committee to review them, and then by, hopefully, the May board meeting, the board can make a selection.
Yeah.
And then we'll negotiate contracts. It's very tight, but if everybody's on board, it can be done by the first part of November.
Okay.
I did want to point out that on the, in addition to the audit, compliance audit RFP, at the end of that is the letter from Senator Coulterman, where he had some suggested changes, so you've got a copy of that letter attached to the RFP.
All bidders will be kept apprised, are being made aware of the legislation, LV145, so it'll also be their responsibility to kind of keep up on that as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Cecilia, you mentioned a committee. Who's on the committee that will review the responses?
We will make that determination at a future date.
That related to my question. Senator Coulterman has indicated that Department of Administrative Services has some resources that they've used on RFPs for the state process. I assume that you're going to be tapping into that as much as possible.
Yes, I've already looked at that, yes.
Yeah, any, any resources that we can avail ourselves of that would make it a more affordable proposition for the plan, I think we should take advantage of. Other questions, thoughts, comments, concerns? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
M. Ray?
Yes.
R. Ray?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Havelvik?
Aye.
Hurson-Bach?
Aye.
Born?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, it is approved. So that completes Agenda Items 1 through 10. Thank you for your flexibility on rearranging the schedule slightly. So again, the issuance of a compliance audit RFP is approved. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 11, which is Actions on Payroll, Retirements, Death Refunds, and Accounts Payable. That is a closed session, so I'd look for a motion to go into closed session.
I move the Board of Trustees to go into closed session for protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with Legal Counsel and Cecilia Carter personal financial matters regarding members of OZERS.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, Cecilia, would you call the motion, or call the roll to go into closed session, please?
Ray? R. Ray?
Aye.
M. Ray?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hurson-Bach?
Aye.
Havelvik?
Aye.
And Born?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, we are in closed session. Cecilia, would you call the roll, please, to go back into open session?
Born?
Here.
Havelvik?
Here.
Hurson-Bach?
Aye.
Johnson?
Here.
R. Ray?
Here.
R. Ray?
Here.
Okay, we are back into open session. I would look for a motion on actions on payroll, retirements, deaths, refunds, and accounts payable.
I move the Board of Trustees for the month of March, ratify pension payments in the amount of $11,406,842.42 to 5,086 payees to approve staff payroll in the amount of $32,303.18 to approve 10 new retirements effective March 1, 2021. First pension check will be paid on April 3, 2021. To ratify the termination of 12 retirements due to death of retiree and five joint and survivor annuity continuations. Approve refunds of $361,070.29 to 26 former employees and members of OZERS. And finally, approve the accounts payable in the amount of $15,459.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the payroll, retirements, deaths, refunds, and accounts payable? Seeing none, Cecilia, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Hurson-Bach?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
M. Ray?
Aye.
R. Ray?
Aye.
And Born?
Aye.
Six ayes.
It is approved. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 12. Is there any new business? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn with the next meeting of Thursday, April 1, 2021.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, Born?
Here, aye, yes.
Havelvik?
Aye.
Hurson-Bach?
Aye.
Johnson? M. Ray?
Aye.
And R. Ray?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, we are adjourned.